Thank you, sir. And good evening to everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair. And it's being broadcast live on channel 4 and streaming live on E34's YouTube channel. So it's available on demand, can and will be rebroadcast. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I will call please.
Counselor Cummings?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Here.
Counselor Russo?
Present.
Counselor Schleger?
Here.
Counselor Yakovales?
Here.
Mayor Spiller?
Present.
We're going to do a couple of proclamations. The first is a proclamation congratulating Union Baptist Church on its 133rd anniversary. Counselor Cummings, can I ask you to do the honors?
Sure, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity as Union Baptist, when it comes to particularly to black community in Montclair, has had a long tradition of just really developing and bringing out some of the best of our community. And I can even include Deputy Manager Brian Scannellberry in there, as well as former Fourth Ward Counselor Sandy Lang. But the proclamation reads as, "Where is the Union Baptist Church of Montclair, the first black Baptist church in Montclair, started in February 1887, when a group of 30 local residents organized their own religious organization called the Baptist Nation? Over the next two years, under the leadership of Reverend Jack Harris, the congregation grew to encompass members of the First Baptist Church before changing its name to Union Baptist. And where is, guided by Reverend William Perry, the next decade in Union Baptist history saw the congregation grow from 46 people to a community of 366 members. It was in this time that Union Baptist was incorporated as a Union Baptist Church. And where is, throughout the subsequent decades, Union Baptist Church had several reverends who each contributed immensely throughout their tenures. Church programs included scholarship funds, a day nursery, and the church gospel chorus and youth drill team. The value of fiscal responsibility and homeownership was stressed, and both outreach and missionary programs were established to further foster the spiritual community. And where is, Union Baptist Church Reverend Matthew G. Carter was the first African-American mayor of Montclair. Former Mayor James Rancy was chairman of the Board of Trustees. Reverend William H. Gray went on to become congressman representing the second congressional district of Pennsylvania. Union Baptist is also the home of Reverend D.C. Rice, whose name is represented in the famous Rice v. Montclair Board of Education lawsuit that addressed segregation in the Montclair Public Schools system. And where is, Union Baptist Church has had a profound effect on the local Montclair community. It has sponsored the Union Development Corporation of Montclair, which was organized to build a relocation housing for Montclair's first urban renewal project, and established the Estes County Nutrition Project, which provided hot lunches to approximately 1,000 senior citizens each day at 10 local sites. Union Baptist Church also partnered with the New Jersey Attorney General's Office and other Estes County entities in a gun buyback program that took over 1,000 guns off the streets. In recent years, it has also developed a series of town hall and educational forums discussing topical issues such as race justice and human trafficking. And where is, Union Baptist Church has been a constant for over a century. Throughout that time, many lives have been touched and connections fostered. The Township of Montclair recognizes the many accomplishments of Union Baptist Church and the contribution its parishioners have made to our community over the past 133 years. Now, therefore, the Mayor and Council of the Township of Montclair hereby congratulate Union Baptist Church on this auspicious occasion and thank them for their years of service to the community. I so move.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
I thank you very much, Councilwoman Cummings. Councilwoman Cummings, I think that speaks well for all of us. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, month rather. Can I ask Councilman Russo and Councilwoman Price Abrams to do the honors about?
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be able to read it, and I want to acknowledge the members of the Civil Rights Commission who had brought this to our attention and proposed that we have such proclamation to acknowledge this. So I'll start, and Counselor Russo is going to continue. For Indigenous Peoples' Month, whereas, for millennia, before Europeans settled in North America, the indigenous peoples of this continent flourished with vibrant cultures and were the original sewers of the land. From generation to generation, they handed down invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions which continue to thrive in Native American communities across our country today. And whereas, in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November 1990 National American Indian Heritage Month. Similar proclamations under variants on the name, including Native American Heritage Month and National American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month, have been issued each year since 1994. And whereas, during Indigenous Peoples' Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas, indigenous people have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations.
And whereas, indigenous people have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas, indigenous people have influenced every stage of America's development, they helped early European settlers survive and thrive in a new land, and they contributed democratic ideas to our constitutional framers. During the month of November, we honor and celebrate the first Americans and recognize their contributions and sacrifices. Now, therefore, the Mayor and Council of the Township of Montclair hereby proclaim November 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Month. We call upon everyone in the community to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities. I so move.
Second.
Just want to mention that, you know, last month, we recognized the large Italian community and Italian-American community in Montclair. A month before that, we recognized Hispanic Heritage Month. We're trying to cover the great mosaic of Montclair. Montclair is a diverse community. We'll be celebrating in the future various other months, like the African-American Heritage Month. And this is something that Montclair is not so much unique, but we're trying to be the model for the country, especially in these times that people are in conflict over diversity. It should be our celebration. We celebrate our diversity, and this is another step. We wouldn't even have Thanksgiving today if it wasn't for the indigenous peoples and Native Americans. So let's all enjoy Thanksgiving for this November and remember Indigenous Peoples' Month. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And of course, well said. Next, we're going to open it up to public comment. In an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this township council meeting and further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now during public comment, as well as later in the meeting during the public hearings for the ordinances on second reading, should dial in to 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 173-583-4454, then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, please simply press pound. When asked to state your name, please do so and press pound. The administrator will say when it's the caller's turn to speak, and the caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comments, and our township manager will be sure to make sure those are within the appropriate time limits. So thank you very much. Mr. Stafford, could I turn those over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. Caller with the number starting 973-619. It is your turn to speak. 973-619. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments beneath three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Good evening, Montclair Township's mayor and council, and all the Montclair citizens on the call, live as well as watching at another time. My name's Ahava Felici Dodd. I would like my five minutes as the president of the tenants' organization of Montclair Advocacy Group. I was born in mountainside hospital, raised in Montclair by my loving parents, family, and the community in Montclair. The foundation laid in my upbringing was just as it was supposed to be. I'm a classically trained cellist, product of the Montclair Public School District, a local business owner, and a graduate of Temple University's Klein School of Media. I started paying rent at the age of 20. I am dedicated to this movement. We would like to welcome and acknowledge Gillian and Keith to the Homeowners Committee, Liz to renter leadership, and Judith with an increase in her renter leadership responsibilities. These are responsibilities we are all honored to take on and hope that more of you out there listening will join us and send your family and friends. We want you on our side. What is our side? Our side is rent control implementation in Montclair for the good of all. We will do whatever we can to help you and to guide you to resources to help you. In my own opinion, everyone who comes to help in our community is being led to do so by answering the deep calling within, a calling that spans out seven generations, as which many of our communications are. Hearts are opening and expanding, and our community is demanding to be valued. Montclair has a reputation to uphold. Be confident, be strong, and be bold. For those who want to know more about rent control, have a better understanding of rent control, rent stabilization, rent leveling, please visit montclairerentcontrol.org. We're excited to hear more of what's coming into our wonderful township. I thank you all for continuing with the virtual meeting so that we can participate and show our support and look forward to our rent control implementation in Montclair, New Jersey. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 201-233. It is your turn to speak. 201-233. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Igoe, and I'm a homeowner in Montclair. I'm calling in to also voice my support for rent control in Montclair and to thank the council for their support. I actually found out about this issue watching a prior town council meeting and hearing about it in the public comment. So I just want to encourage everyone to vote for rent control as it comes to that, and prior to that, to get involved with the movement for rent control in Montclair. I think it's very important for our community. And if you want to learn more, as Ahava mentioned, the website is montclairerentcontrol.org, or you can email tenantsorganizationmontclair@gmail.com. I'm very hopeful that the town will be able to actually implement rent control since it passed it so long ago and get that moving. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Caller with the number starting 201-874. It is now your time to speak. 201-874. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Louisa Hackett, and I am also a member of the tenants' organization of Montclair. I'm a member of the homeowners committee, and I wanted to state my amazement, but really it's my sort of dismay that while our country could hold an election in a pandemic where we all abided by the legal deadlines, and by all accounts, that election went smoothly, here in New Jersey, there's a judge that has allowed multiple times a group of landlords to have sort of greater leeway with the deadlines in terms of getting the signatures and in terms of getting the time to cure the signatures. And I guess I have one question for the council. Is there anything you can suggest that the residents of Montclair that are in support of rent control, is there anything we can do while we wait for the court, this court case to be dealt with or settled?
Well, thank you for that question, and I'll certainly offer it to our attorney to offer more insights in that regard. But first and foremost, as we know, and certainly as an educator, I always say information, knowledge is power. So the fact that you're on here, making sure you're staying informed and educated around the issue, telling others about the issue, I think that's important. You guys are working hard to spread the message as to why we need rent control, all the reasons why it is part of keeping us a diverse community, why it's such a desirable community. So I think your efforts are appreciated in that regard, and certainly I think that's what I would advise to keep doing, certainly to grow the communication around the issue, make sure you're telling everybody, you know, in any way possible, friends, neighbors, others, and, you know, keeping this issue at the forefront. So a lot of what you are doing, it's a little bit of a waiting game, and I think our township attorney can speak a little more to that piece of it, and if there are other components that you may be able to assist with. But I think that grassroots effort that you're engaged in is one of the key pieces of it. We thank you for your efforts. So thank you. Mr. Karasik, give me a second.
Sure, Mayor. First of all, the mayor actually recounted, I would say, most everything that the residents can do to support rent control in order to keep the issue alive. The court has been difficult, to say the least, in terms of allowing this matter to keep getting extended and delayed and essentially giving every opportunity possible to the plaintiffs, which is the property ownership association, to bring this thing to an election. So if it does go to an election, and that's not clear at all at this point because we have, we're involved in litigation, then there's a lot you can do and all, and any supporters of rent control can do, because there will be actually, there would be a vote. So until then, I could say just the mayor summarized it quite well, and we'll keep, whatever information occurs will be, the public will know about in the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. attorney.
Caller with the number starting 973-886. It is now your time to comment. 973-886. Please, for the record, state your name and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Tesler. I am also with the homeowners committee of the tenants' organization of Montclair. I first want to echo what you've heard from Ahava and Gillian and Louisa. Our committee is growing, as you can tell, and we stand with Montclair renters whom we believe should have the opportunity to make Montclair their permanent home without the threat of being pushed out by excessively large rent increases. To other homeowners who may be listening, we invite you to join us. You can go to montclairerentcontrol.org. We welcome other homeowners to join our committee in support of renters in Montclair. And I just want to thank again, thank you, Mayor and council members, for your continued efforts to put this ordinance into place.
Thank you.
Mayor, at present, there are no other callers in the queue.
Thank you, sir. So with that, I will close public comment. Next, we have our pending ordinances for second reading. We have ordinance 0-20-22. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wish to report that both ordinances for second reading on tonight's agenda have been published and posted, and copies have been made available to the public by the clerk's office as required by law. Item A is Ordinance 02022, amending Chapter 202 of the Township Code.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in relation to the proposed ordinance? Mr. Stafford, let me know, please, if we have somebody that calls in for that.
There are no callers, Mayor.
Sir, with that, any comments from my colleagues? Close the hearing on this ordinance. Madam Clerk, all to a vote.
May I have a moment and a second, please?
Ordinance 020-22. I so move.
Second.
Can I call the roll now?
Please.
All right. Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
He's on mute.
He's not even on.
Councilman Russo, are you able to hear us there?
I do not. Oh, there he is.
Counselor Russo? Please unmute yourself.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, ordinance 020-23. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, item B is Ordinance 02023, authorizing the acquisition of property known as 57 Park Street.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in relation to the proposed ordinance? And Mr. Stafford, again, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I see no one has called.
Thank you, sir. I so move.
Second.
Any comments? The council?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, our resolutions, items on the content agenda. Those items include Resolutions Number 1 through 11. Is there anyone who wishes to have any of those held out? Seeing none. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is Items 1 through 11. Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Counselor Schleger? Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is our, thank you, our 20-185, which is Resolution Authorizing Transfer of Funds in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 40814-58. Proceed as per, I so move.
Second.
Concerns, comments? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Thank you. The bill resolution, Councilman Schleger, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas invoices against the Township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amounts that opposite their respective names have been received, duly audited, and found correct, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid, and checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively, and hereinafter stated on the schedule attached here to and made apart here of. This bill list is dated November 16th, year 2020, the amount of $12,843,76.58, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns?
I have a couple of questions. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just have a, I was just curious, on page, they're so tiny, page five, the Dujets tree that records, the $36,000. That was the tree removals, is that, I see, from the Hurricane Isaiah's? Is that all complete now, or will there be more bills, do you think, from that?
I don't, I don't know. It's possible that there may be more invoices coming, not only from Dujets, but from other vendors, vendors, in connection with Tropical Storm Isaias. But what should be known is that we had and will continue to submit to FEMA for reimbursement for as much money as we possibly can on behalf of the township and the taxpayers to receive every dollar that we can from FEMA.
That's okay. Terrific. Thank you very much. I had a couple other questions, and they are on page nine. The Law Office is a Peter Russo for Jordan 250. What does Mr. Russo do for us?
Mr. Russo is the public defender.
That's right. Okay, thank you. I forgot. And also, on page 13, P.K. O'Connor Davies, professional fees for $5,000.
P.K. O'Connor Davies is the township auditor.
And also, Riker Danzig Shear Highland for $5,000, for law, legal services.
Correct. Those, that firm and those attorneys represent the township in various litigation matters, one of which is the taking of the property behind the police department, which is very likely the invoice that you're, that you're referencing.
Okay. And also, on page 25, I guess this is a law firm, Hymanston, Paines, and Giampalo, is that, for $2,000? Is that a law firm as well? There in Lynncroft?
That I'd have to look up and get back to you. It, it is under the Section 8 section of invoices paid, so it, I'm not sure what it is, so I'll have to look that, look that up and get back to you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stafford.
Mr. Knowier.
Thank you. Is that it? Is that it, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Thank you. Into our executive session, we'll ask, are there any comments? Mr. Stafford, start with you.
I have one comment. The firm of Hyman-
The firm of Hymanston, Parnes, and Giampolo provides accounting services for our section eight offices. That's our fee for that.
Look at that rapid response. Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Well done there.
Thank you, Mr. Fan. He's responsible for my computer.
If you go right, when you hear the ding, you get the, you got the help you needed. Any other comments, Mr. Stafford? Is that, is that it? Yep. Mr. Scannellberry?
Well, yes, pertaining to the first proclamation, I'd like to say that I'm a proud descendant of Jack Haps, the first, a direct descendant.
Excellent, thank you. We open, Madam Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Your election. Brassic?
Nothing tonight, you're, Mr. Mayor, like I said, you're an honor almost, but I guess that's what it's.
Used to being in the dock, that's the problem.
Fighting for it in court, so nice job, all right. Next, let's go down the line here, let's go, we tried the last time, so let's go through. Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be short, given the lateness of the hour. I just wanted to point out two, two great things I was able to participate in, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, and some of our council colleagues. The first was Portrait Salon, which just had their grand opening over on Valley Road, and I was there with Counselor Yakovales as well. And then, of course, the ribbon cutting at Mattarello Bakery in, also in Upper Montclair there, with, with you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Schleger as well. You know, it's, it's really a testament to the town of Montclair and the perseverance of our people that we're able to have these, we're able to have these events while COVID is going on and all the things that we're dealing with. It's a testament to the strength of the people here in, in Montclair, and I'm absolutely thrilled that we were able to participate in these events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There are a lot of, like, static and, I see Councilman Schleger shaking her head too. Does anyone mind just muting themselves until you're up, just because I'm sure everyone's probably very into it? Thank you very much. All right, and now I'm going to go to our, our second ward, Councilman Schleger.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would like to remind people to remember those in need in our, in our town, in our community. There is, there is a lot of need and, and anything that we could do to reach out to friends and neighbors and help support Tony's Kitchen or any of the other organizations out there that help feed people during the Thanksgiving holiday. I also want to, this, after the Thanksgiving holiday is the official shopping season for the holidays, I wanted also to remind people to shop local. I believe the Saturday after that, I forget, I think it's December 5th, is Shop Local Day in our town. And if you can't shop local, and if you use Amazon, to remember to hook into Amazon Smiles, which helps a lot of the nonprofits, a portion of your, of the sales go towards the nonprofit. I know a lot of them have it, and if you go to Amazon Smiles, there's a list there and you can, you could choose the organization where you would like to have some of your money donated to, and it really adds up. So everybody have a blessed Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for during this, you know, very trying time, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving to the third ward, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Good evening, everybody. I was, it's interesting, I was going to mention similarly about Shop Local Saturday as we are moving toward the, the season of gifts and holidays, so just, you know, find your ways to take part in that, but also that I participated the other day in the, the meeting of the bid, the center bid, and they are the recipients, having gone for a Main Street USA kind of grant, and they were successful, and it was in a short order that they, they pulled together a lot of compelling information and a narrative about our town and were able to attract the kind of dollars that will enable them to do a strategic plan to enhance, again, the offerings of the town, to make it more, it's open in some ways for, for suggestions and ideas, and there was a good creative discussion on the last bid meeting, and, you know, an exciting phase that they can be of revisioning of how we even have a more vibrant community, and certainly in light of, you know, the challenges we all face right now, so it's something in the hopeful space. I also participated, the PRCA, the Parks and Rec, and then of Counsel, Counselor Yakovales will say something further, but they did some plantings and beautification at many of the parks in town a weekend before. I was able to help plant some daffodil bulbs with group of committed volunteers and young people over at Porter Park, so I commend the people out there who are just the people who drive our town forward in so many positive ways, so glad to take part with them, and happy Thanksgiving in advance.
Thank you very much. Moving to our fourth ward, Councilman Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I did a couple of things. One is the, participated in some simulated training with Chief Conforti and Deputy Chief Young, and, you know, I have to tell you, it was a really good experience, particularly learning how to fire, how much police officers, our officers, have to really be very knowledgeable in local, state, and federal laws, and while it was fun to be in such a situation where you're acting like you're catching a criminal, you know, the questions that they presented to us right afterwards really took you off your feet, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity, I think, actually, and I told manager Stafford, I think every council member should be mandatory to go. It was really, really a great experience, and I want to thank Chief Conforti and Deputy Chief Young for invite over there. Only thing is, something I'm trying to do periodically, participating in a ride along with Craig Brandon. Craig and I go way back, he's actually coached me when I was young, but gave me a different sense of our recycling and refuge collection, and, you know, I have to tell you, it's somewhat disheartening that a lot of people have garbage bins out that are too large and don't confront in our ordinance of 35 pounds each, yet, you know, they still get their garbage dumped, and I think it's something that we really should look at because it's, as, as I was told, you know, sanitation work in Department of Public Works is the fifth most dangerous job in the world, and, you know, just going out for those couple of hours with him, it was pretty eye-opening, again, something I suggest we consider. Finally, I think I personally want to thank Dr. Pons for going out and doing the all remote learning. As we know, COVID and the numbers that we've received the last couple of weeks have skyrocketed, and although I think it's something that a lot of parents may not be happy about, I think the safety and well-being of teachers, staff, and the greater community is something that I just want to say, I think he, he made a wise decision there. And then finally, you know, as always being a Mountie, I always like to shout out when our teams are doing well, and for everyone to know that our number two ranked girls and number two ranked boys soccer teams are playing in state tournament games tomorrow and Wednesday, so we should try and get out there where you're blue. Anytime Montclair athletic teams do well, I try my best to get there, but also making sure that people are aware. So as, you know, as a former Mountie to the current Mounties, go big blue.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go next to Councilman Russo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to reiterate, we worked hard on that resolution, that ordinance, and Peter Yakovales was the driving force on that for indigenous peoples. We try to recognize everyone in this town, and we try to bring all the diverse mosaic of Montclair together, and it's just inspiring to see how everybody works together. We may have differences, disagreements, but the Montclair way is to work together, and I think that's an example for the country, and we've just been through a very difficult election, apparently some people still don't accept the results, conflicts are occurring all over the country, but hopefully in Montclair, we could set an example for working together. I was teasing before that I had an old poster of President Kennedy in the room, but my new library room just painted here, it's, it's also a poster of Ike Eisenhower, was the hero for my father when he came out of the war and supported Eisenhower, and when Eisenhower was president, 1952 to 60, he was actually the oldest president at that time, and as a Republican president, he did a lot of very progressive things for this country, and then he turned over to the youngest president we ever had, President Kennedy. So back to back, a Republican to a Democrat, had a wonderful transition, a positive relationship, no party politics interfered with that, and no personal ambition. So for Ike and JFK, there's an example for our country, and Montclair as an example for the whole world. Let's just try to keep together in this Thanksgiving, it's a tough time, and I think that everybody here in Montclair is pulling together. The mayor's now announced a coronavirus task force committee, I hope everyone will work together. We're all in this together, we've got to get through it together by next year this time, hopefully we'll all be together for Thanksgiving with our families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Yakovales?
Thanks, Mayor. I think everyone already covered what I would have said, so thank you. I'll just echo what everyone else said.
Excellent, thank you. And I will simply do much of the same. Want to say, as our deputy mayor noted, it's been great to go to some of these ribbon cuttings, in the sense of it's great to see businesses still opening up and getting started and energizing in our, our community. I have to say, it's probably meant, we've had to go for a few extra runs between the, you know, different shops that are opening up and the great food that we're eating and, you know, a few extra pounds we're putting on with all that, but in all seriousness, it's wonderful to see everybody still engaging in that way, and the community still coming out, being safe, properly distanced, mask wearing, you know, but, but still supporting our local businesses, so that's great news there. Along those lines, it was, it was really exciting to go to a Beyond the Boogie event, which was a lot of dancing for, for a lot of our youth, which was kind of fun, too, they had an opening piece, and again, I know we're all excited about some of that. I do want to note and, and also say, yes, certainly, you know, have announced the coronavirus task force, unfortunately, we see our numbers throughout the nation, throughout the state, certainly here in town, everywhere, going in a, in the wrong direction, a direction that was predictable, everybody kind of thought we might have something, we're all hoping for the best and enjoying a little bit of a lull, but with that, certainly trying to activate the great resources that we have here in town and a number, you know, wonderful, very good people have agreed to participate, so really excited about that and looking forward to how they interface to offer suggestions, offer solutions, et cetera. So kudos to those who've agreed to serve, and thank you, everybody, for the diverse set of names that you helped put forward to look at and consider and to come up with a great team, so excited with that. You know, certainly we'll just note that it's really in part of, and I know that the Councilwoman, Councilwoman Price Abrams noted before with her attending the bid, you know, really is on top of the work that we've been really trying to do, whether it be $150,000 in small business grants that we put forth, whether it's the Shop Local campaign that we've helped to come up with, and a number of people on here, I know Deputy Mayor and Councilman Yakovales helped to drive some of that work, whether it be literally the park arrangements that we have made in the past and fees we've forgone, or it be the, the holiday parking that we're doing again this year to promote people to come out, shop local, even though the revenues are down, and that's a difficult call, you know, convincing the manager and others to do that, you know, good, good move there, and we're very happy to continue that work. So I think a lot going on, and yes, we're trying to drive people out to make sure that they can safely come out and support our local businesses, be part of the community, enjoy the holidays, but as I think was also noted, you know, very specifically, I think Councilman Schleger, you noted, it's, holidays are a time of giving, and certainly when we talk about Thanksgiving here and then into, you know, Christmas and, 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 you know, beyond, I think we all need to be focused on making sure we give to those that may be a little less fortunate. You know, we have, you know, obviously, you know, much need, when we talk about Tony's Kitchen or otherwise, you know, certainly be mindful that, especially during this pandemic, it's difficult for our homeless to get the shelter they need, there's, there's challenges because of COVID and distancing, there's still the need, and probably greater than ever, food insecurity out there, so in addition to the work that the township has done with matching funds to Tony's Kitchen, just remember, anything you can do personally, it goes a long way, makes a big difference, so we would all encourage you to continue to contribute in any way that you can. So if ever there was a town that did a lot, to do a lot on that front, you know, we're the town of Montclair, so thank you all for that. As, as Councilman Cummings noted, you know, you know, when we talk about garbage collection and, and some of the work that goes on there, it's important that you keep that 35-gallon garbage container, it gets really heavy once you go over that, it's, it's a real problem, and, you know, we don't think about it because maybe we're just lugging the one can to the curb, but, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with that all day long, it's a real safety hazard, so please, as you noted, take heed on that, make sure you follow the instructions, they try to, you know, literally help in any way they can, but, but let's not put them at risk. So with that, you know, want to thank everybody out there for everything you're doing to continue to stay safe. You know, we're all getting COVID fatigue, as the governor has noted repeatedly here, but let's do all we can to stay masked up, keep distanced, you know, be smart during the holidays here. We are working right now with the governor's administrations to do a number of tests specific for Montclair, pre-holidays and post-holidays to kind of help in that regard, but remember, testing doesn't stop COVID, it just tells you where it is and how to, how to, you know, make sure you manage any type of occurrences that are happening. Best defense is wear that mask, keep socially distanced, you know, stay within your, your core nucleus of your family and celebrate together, and then virtually with the rest of your family. So thank you, everybody, for, for the diligence on that front, so it's a big ask, but something we all have to do, so. And with that, I will now move resolution R-20-186, which is a resolution authorizing executive session without the public being permitted to attend in accordance with NJSA 10,412, for the topic of personnel, personnel and litigation and ISO.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we shall move into the session.
We'll take Mr. Gearhart a few minutes to take us off TV 34, so I ask you to bear with us.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Stafford and Mr. Gearhart, just let us know once we are, thank you. Based on that, we have concluded our executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Great holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Good night, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
All right.